Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please Patty.
Here.
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 Here. Here. For him present. Does anybody, any commissioner have a financial or non-financial reason to abstain from anything tonight?
No.
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 I have not. That had entertained approval of the agenda.
The only thing is they last meeting I requested that we had the three ten on here and it didn't make it on.
What did you ask to be on?
Three ten when Mr. Haley came in, I asked that it be put on.
Last night you did?
No, last meeting. It wasn't, so I just, I didn't know if that was, if that was an oversight that it happens, but I'd like it on the next meeting. So we can make a decision one way or another. I think we owe the citizens that.
Okay. Great. That I'd entertain approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. This time I'd welcome anybody to come forward for public comment.
Last night I was. Watching, seeing remotely. And just as a housekeeping point. Please remember to. People are doing this checking out remotely. These microphones are very important. Is this even on?
No.
No.
Okay, well.
Other, other button, other button. One other.
Yeah, that one, okay. As I was saying, these microphones are very important because when I'm halfway across town, I can't hear. And if somebody is back in the chief seats, I have no idea what question was being asked. So, and the fact that they are permanent record of the meetings, please be conscious all the way around that. That's gonna help save you because in five years, you know, you want to go back and you may not be able to hear at all because, you know, I know it was a bit crowded with all the posters and stuff up here and I know Sherry got up here to use this mic at one point. But yeah, just, just that, please. Mics are important, please.
Good point.
See you Dan.
Yeah, yeah, he's watching without his.
So did you?
Yeah, yeah, I have an excuse. No.
We got some volume. Two things. First thing is whatever the process they used going south out of Allen towards Gaville on that road in an old fifty. God, is that an improvement? And I talked to Mike about it and he said it was a new deal and he kind of roughly explained it to me. And it, it just made a really pleasant surface out of that road. And whatever it was, I don't know what it was, we'll find out how long it lasts because that's the next thing. But I guess it goes, what else I was gonna say, if you don't try something new.
The other thing is right now I'm opening up the texture box. For inner road and.
Louis.
You shut, I think you shut it off. There you go. You're back on.
Okay, I'll keep my hand over here. But that guy is planning for the future. And I have felt that Yankton County has spent the last forty years planning for the past. You guys been in office for a while? What have you done to help young people start farming? And has anybody ever checked to see what it takes to start a young farmer? I mean, if you have to go out and buy land and equipment and try to do something to make enough to actually make a living. I don't know if five million would catch it anymore. And if you had five million, there's a good chance that you might have a job if you've got that. There are opportunities out there. There is. I've visited with people in Turner County that went after the large scale derids vigorously and they're having a building boom. Centerville is growing. Byberg is growing. Their schools are growing. And the people I've talked to, you have the old ones, well, by God, those sided trucks go past my place and there's dust. And they should have to carry it in a basket or something so they don't offend me. And the section line I'm opening, I've already gotten reports back that there are people just furious about that because there's never rode there before and now there'll be traffic past my house. I won't like that. I think this county needs to rethink things and start planning for the future instead of planning for the past. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Item five, approve twenty twenty-three provisional budget as the twenty twenty-three annual budget. If you have one thing to note, and I don't have it up, but Mike. Like about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in gravel. Came out of secondary roads and went into the gravel line item. The, the budget number stayed the same. It just was moved from one pot to the other.
Sure, you're taking. Putting into the, the twenty thousand into gravel.
Your microphone's not on.
On Joe.
I was just trying to pull it up. I just know that that's.
Still not on.
I believe it roughly a hundred and twenty-three thousand. That was what Mike had talked to you about Patty.
And subtracted out of secondary roads there.
What way, what's the reasoning? Is that because it's gonna go on secondary roads?
We've got a gravel. Yes, yeah, it'll go on secondary roads if there's a gravel line item. And that was rough numbers, so I. He talked to you about that last week Patty.
He did say what he was changing.
Oh, okay.
I mean, is that something he could leave in secondary roads and then we could move it at a later date? I just, I just hate to have the budget published like that and then do a change at the last minute. That's my.
It could Ben and I advised him to just do it upfront.
Sure, sure.
The, I, I think the reason he's doing it is during our summer budget discussion, there was a lengthy discussion about having gravel in the budget.
Yeah.
So now he's going ahead and putting it in the budget as requested.
Where would it, where is it gonna go then? Which, which line item?
Gravel.
So what numbers?
One twenty-three for gravel and we're gonna take one twenty-three out of secondary roads, which is toward the bottom.
Page are you on? I guess so.
No idea.
Okay. Cause I don't even see, I'm, I'm in the highway ones and I don't see that line item in here. So I'm just wondering where it goes. You said one twenty? For this number?
Okay.
One twenty-three, I think.
I don't think you've got, you don't have the line item like Patty does. You've got the condensed version. So the total number, the total number that was published in the newspaper remains the same. All he's doing is taking out of subcategory and moving it to another.
Yeah, so on this, it, it won't show up.
Yep, so everything published is exactly the same.
So is the total right now the end total for the highway seven two, two, three?
Yes. Yep.
But. I didn't have. Hundred and twenty-three thousand in that gravel.
Right, that's what I'm saying is.
So he.
That's what he called you about last week. Yeah, he wants to take that amount from secondary roads and put it into the gravel line item versus. Having to transfer it down the road or whatever. But yeah, the total, the total remains the same, so. Any other questions or discuss?
Yeah, I do. Last, last meeting, we had a presentation. By Thrive. For their request. Has a decision been made on that anyway, so. And can it still be made?
We, right now we have fifty thousand in the budget for Thrive and that is still on the yes three campaign.
And that's. That's fine.
Right, so you're looking to add to it?
That's back payment for. Commitment we made three years ago and we haven't fulfilled.
Yep, twenty, twenty eighteen-ish, I think that was made. Yep.
And I think his request was. To extend that. Fifty thousand a year. For five years.
I, I don't know that he made a request. I think he made a presentation. And I don't know that we know as we sit here today, what kind of money we're gonna have two years from now.
I, no, I think he made a request. I know he made a request.
Well, I guess regardless if the request was, if his presentation request.
Cause I turned it down. I, I said I would, I, I said I would take your request. I would suggest that we pay what we committed to pay over the last three years, plus make a commitment for the next five years. He requested to continue the fifty thousand dollars a year for five years.
I guess my, my opinion would be that we. We take Thrive and all of these donated monies to, on a year by year basis. And the reason we're still paying off what was allocated before is because that was a five-year commitment. That we had no idea what kind of dollars the county would have five years from now and. So I, I would do it year by year. I don't think it's wise to put a five-year commitment to something like that.
So then are you gonna pay the back a hundred and fifty that we owe yet or whatever it is that we owe?
And that's what's in here, yes.
So you're not gonna. Add anything to the, the program?
No.
None. I don't think we discussed that.
So my notes say that Tom had said to extend the balance to twenty-five thousand each year. So essentially three of the old campaign and then two for the new. And I have you done saying finish yes three, do five years at twenty-five thousand for yes four, is what I've got.
Twenty-five.
That, that's what you suggested. I don't think we had any further discussion on that. My opinion is we've got an election coming up and we could have three new commissioners sitting here who might have different views. So I think this conversation probably needs to happen next year. We committed to instead of just doing the twenty-five thousand to, to boost it to fifty to try and get that back. And I think we still have a seventy-five thousand dollar balance after that payment. So next year budget time and it was commented last night that when we were in here, the three of us. There was a session on county insolvency. And so for us to sit here and make a decision for five years down the road, I think is, is not responsible.
Well, I wouldn't agree with that. I think any organization has long-term plans. They change them during the interim period of time in which the five years are taking place. But if you don't look forward and decide what you want to do. Mr. Johnson talked about strategic thinking. If you don't do that, you're sitting here. With Band-Aids, mosquito bites.
Does anybody feel the same as Don? Not, I think we'll move forward. Any other comments, questions, discussions, open items on the, on the.
Provisional budget.
Provisional budget, thank you. Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Supposed to say name.
Four, one.
Your microphone's not on.
Okay, moving on, item six.
Well, for the people at home. No, he's not.
Surplus item. I don't think there should be a whole lot of discussion about this one. There's a six point seven five horsepower John Deere lawnmower with a transmission that does not work.
Only twenty years old. Nothing lasts anymore. Make a motion to declare the mower surplus.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item seven. Schmidt. I don't think the plots have to be.
They're not advertised, are they?
No. We have two plats this evening. The first one is a plat of Harold's addition in the northeast quarter of section eleven. Township ninety-six north range fifty-five west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Who would rule the plot?
Which plat is that? Is that the Schmidt plat?
Harold's, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, motion by gathering second by Flemish. Further discussion. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Second one's plat of tracks one and two in lot five of section thirty-two township ninety-five north. Range fifty-five west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, containing forty-eight point one-two acres more or less.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, August tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
They were published. They just want to prove.
This, the special meeting?
Yep.
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, September sixth, twenty twenty-two.
The only correction I'd have is on action two, two, three, six, one, A, MB. Is we modified that list to include the sale of additional items that were gonna be discarded. So I think an easy solution is to approve the modified list because we did change it from the list that was presented.
What was the action?
Uh, we, there, there were some like bags and some tactical vests that were gonna be discarded. And we decided, you know, why, since we're selling items anyway, let's get a few bucks out of them. And so we, some items that were gonna be thrown away, we went to the cell pile.
But we don't, it just was declared surplus.
Okay.
I mean, not, you know.
Okay, so the.
Well, I guess.
Cause we have to sell them.
I get what you're saying. Okay.
If.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, claims.
Are there any questions where I? Motion. Move to approve the claims. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Auditor, treasurer, report and fool's cash report.
Move to approve. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. He's trying to screw me up.
It's working.
All right. Item eleven, we've got surplus property and then we're, we're not gonna do the abate taxes tonight, correct?
I have a question about that. Is that surplus real estate? What kind of surplus property is it?
It's real estate.
Patty, is this coming from the treasurer's office or who's?
She's taken the property for tax.
Okay, so she's.
So we would declare, we would surplus the, she would take the property and then.
And this is all in Mission Hill? No, I looked up all of those. If you go out to Beacon, you can look up all the tax parcels. So you've got one along the Jim River just south of three oh nine, Utica South. One, Janicek, and I'm not probably saying that word correctly. But there's one, two, three, four, five, six of that house that was, or that, that town that was platted. And there's all these little lots and there's six of them that the county owns out there. There's one in the town of Gayville, one in the town of Mission Hill and one in the town of Yankton. So that would be all of those.
Patty, what's the proceed? Are we gonna have like a share function on these or what?
Seven bid.
Seal bid or?
Or seal.
Okay.
And then we need three people or you can hire someone to, they need to value these properties.
I'll do, we usually do it.
Pat, Patty.
No. Patty's all done. It's, it's. In my office now.
So how do they typically do it? I mean, the county has sold property before.
Most counties. Have three people because they don't want to pay for someone to do it. And I think the last time we had circle, we did hire. The board did hire some to go and check them.
Could we have like equal, our equalization office do it? I mean.
I, I don't, I don't think so.
I'm sure if we ask for citizen input, people would probably help. They seem like they're, be willing to help out, but. Any idea on what an assessor would, like an outside assessor would cost?
I think it was like two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, somewhere there's a few hundred.
Per property or?
No, for total.
Oh, that's not that bad.
Yeah. By higher.
Gary, some of these are flood plain properties. Is that, okay. I think that one by the river is.
So do you need a motion to declare them?
Yes.
And debate the taxes?
No, I'm gonna wait because that one, the Yankton City parcel has a special on it. Um, that's fifteen hundred dollars. And I might be able to have them forgive that, but other ones will have to stay on there.
Okay, so we just.
That one I can. So I'm gonna wait with abatement, maybe till the next meeting.
Just a motion to declare surplus, surplus property.
I got a question. On the last property, what's the nuisance? The fifteen sixty-nine ninety-five?
Might be weeds.
Something on the property. I don't know if they.
On Ash Street?
Yeah, if they moved. Moved the house or. For it now, I can't, I don't know. That comes from the city.
Sure.
They might have just cleaned up. Yeah. And we can't abate anything that improves. The property.
Okay.
Okay, so we just need a motion. Can we make that for, do we have to want each parcel?
No.
Okay, so we can make it for, as presented. We're simply gonna declare them surplus tonight. You're gonna look into tax abatement. And then at what point do we? Need to decide if we wanna have an appraiser look at these or?
We can do it the next meeting.
Okay.
Or, I mean, that's up to you. You can decide now so I can call them and.
Well, I think if we have a price, we could make a decision. If it's at two hundred and fifty dollars, it's probably a no-brainer, but.
Decide move to declare the property's surplus.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And do you have any idea when that? Will be published to have seal bids in?
Um, I think we have to decide when we're gonna receive the bids. So, and I'll have to have that in the, in the ad.
Right, okay. But that'll be published in newspapers and hopefully we're making an announcement here. A meeting prior to so people are aware of that.
And we can put it on the website.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. That, we are on item twelve, public comment. Anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates.
You want to start? I guess I'll, what do we add? We had a. Eight county meeting in Lenox was pretty good. One of the guest speakers, Ms. Stone, Veteran Service Officer for Lincoln County, gave a presentation on how she foresees a pretty good size rise in. Requirements of Veteran Service Officers, particularly with the PAC Act that followed. A lot of people who were not eligible for services now are. And so we could see an influx of new veterans seeking service in the county and that's something we need to keep an eye on for. I'll give you an example. I, I know a guy who. Served in Thailand during the Vietnam War and he was not eligible for services. Now he is. And that goes with a lot of Navy personnel who are outside a certain radius. So there's a lot more veterans that now will be able to get services. And the VA, from what we understand, is encouraging people to apply now before it actually goes into place. So we're expecting an uptick in people applying for benefits. What else do we have? We went to the state. Commission Association in Pier and. I'm on the executive board again, I guess, for right or wrong, so I'm happy about that. Like Sherry had mentioned, one of the big topics was county insolvency. And there, there is a number of counties that may face bankruptcy in the next five years. So it's, it's nothing that the counties are doing to recklessly spend. It's just all of the requirements such as court and, and state requirements that are increasing. So it was eye-opening and it's always a good experience to go to those events. So I have.
Already sent my notes out on the convention, so if you had any questions, let me know. One thing I did want to mention is I had Valley on our website because we have job postings. It was really hard to find them. So on the homepage now, the little tabs across the top, there is now one that says join our team. So you can click right there and go to the job postings. One thing that was mentioned during one of those HR things is when you send out emails with your signature to have a link to your job postings. So I went in and put a little link to the join our team. And it might, may make a difference. It may not, but the better chances we have to get our job openings out there. The better we have to find folks. I did ask Patty to look into the state's job website and the NACO website as well to try and get all of our job postings out there. And Gary is looking at sending some of them to the neighboring states as well. So, because the job market is tough right now to find folks, so we need to be aggressive in our approach. Oh, and last night we had mentioned putting a bunch of documents on the highway page. I did ask Valley to do that. She's at training this week, so hopefully it'll be done by next week.
Thank you. Just a quick one. I met with Richard Larson and United Way and. And basically the contact center, just to kind of go through some of their transitioning plans and, and whatnot with the passing of Troy. and basically the contact center, just to kinda go through some of their, uh, transitioning plans and, and whatnot with the passing of Troy. And so I don't expect any thing to be done in the immediate future by any means, but there is conversations about, um, how that organization's gonna look, and uh, how they'll replace Troy and some of that, so, um, they'll continue to operate as, as they have been, uh, until foreseeable future, but I know that was a tough loss, and there may be some hiccups in there. And they're operating, but, uh, hopefully look to, they have a, a fairly new board, a lot of new board members, and so there's kind of a learning curve, but, um, I guess bear with them, and hopefully they continue to provide the services that they have been. That.
I have one more thing, unless Don wanted to have something. Uh, on, uh, October first, uh, our National Guard unit is being re-flagged from Bravo Battery back to its historic Charlie Battery, it's a, a pretty neat ceremony, if you've never been to one, uh, and it, the public is open, uh, to it, that's gonna be at ten o'clock, out at the National Guard Armory, and, uh, pretty cool event, so.
Saturday, the.
Saturday, October first, at ten o'clock.
What's that called then?
Uh, it's a good question, it would probably be a re-flagging ceremony, because they will case the Bravo Battery colors, and then bring out the Charlie Battery colors, and then they're gonna bring the colors to Bravo Battery that's standing up in Sioux Falls, so react, I guess it's kind of reactivating the battery, so.
Okay.
Okay, that I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for power relief pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight thirteen one point three, and personnel subject to one twenty-five dash two, subparagraph one.
So moved, second.
Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes, we are now in executive session.
Get to work.
I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We're now back into regular session.
Move to approve the agreement for payment of physical examination required for admission pursuant to an involuntary commitment with the bearer.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passes.
I would move to pay CW twenty-two dash one dash zero two four, and CW twenty-two dash two dash zero two six in the amount of one thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-four, or fifty-three cents. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would move to deny CWMI twenty-two dash three dash oh two, CW twenty-two dash two dash seventeen, CW twenty-two dash two dash twenty-five, and CW twenty-one dash forty-nine pursuant to SDCL twenty-eight dash thirteen dash three, twenty-eight dash thirteen one, one point one.
Second.
In the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would move to approve the section seven-ten request.
Do you, do you wanna go, that's actually an agenda item?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot.
Okay.
So we have to say no action will be taken to personnel.
Yeah, no action has taken as account of the personnel executive session, and we will move on to item fifteen.
Move to approve the section seven-ten request through February first of twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
February first of twenty-twenty-three. Yes.
From?
Oh, um.
Is it the twelve?
Has to be backdated to the first.
No, I think it is the twelfth, September twelfth. Ninth, let's put the ninth down, so to approve the, your great request from September ninth through February first.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, maybe nobody.
I think it made it.
Please. Is there a second? I'll second. No, I thought Wanda did.
I did, yeah.
I've got it written down as Wanda. I'm gonna say. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Items for next meeting.
Three ten street.
Do we have to have the section seven-ten disability on again next time?
No.
Okay.
What do you want for three ten, just a discussion, or?
I, I think what, uh, last night when they came in, they, all they were asking for was the removal, whether or not we're, we're, we're gonna remove the minimum maintenance sign.
Correct.
And then what level, if any, uh, maintenance are we gonna have on that road? And I guess that's something we can decide, that, uh, Gary provided us with those memorandums that were signed, I believe in twenty-fourteen, where it indicates that we can choose, um, and I, to get some closure to that, I think we need to decide what we're gonna do with that. And move on, so.
Any other items?
Mike will be on for the approving the five-year plan.
Yeah.
First meeting in October, it's due the fifteenth.
That I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion passes.